Welcome to the February meeting of the Central School District Board. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it into the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved policy process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication and if so, that avenue is preferred. And thank you again for your attendance at this meeting in the Central School Board. So, we are down to adoption of the agenda.
So, I'm just going to make a couple of comments. Because of the weather, we wanted to make sure that our students and staff were safely home. At about 4:30, we were potentially seeing snow showers and then clearly by the time the sun goes down, there would potentially be freezing on the roads and we wanted to make sure our staff. So, we will not have presentations tonight from Power Peers or ASBEC because of that because, again, you all know, safety is one of my priorities in our school district. I know that there was going to be a presentation by CEA's Ash Creek, but both of the teachers that were presenting actually live out of town and so I wanted them to get home safely. So, we're going to do a little bit of moving around of the agenda to some degree. Once I do my first piece, then we will jump down because I do not believe OSEA has a presentation correct. Okay. So, we would jump directly down then into Financial and Program Reports. Okay? So, a little bit shorter tonight from that perspective. But before we start that, as I shared last meeting, I actually have something for all of you. Okay. So, as I shared at the January meeting, I'm starting this month's meeting with a continued celebration of the recognition of our Board of Directors. Last month, I began with a reading of the State of Oregon Proclamation from the Office of the Governor and this month, I'm celebrating the Board with a few more important and practical gifts that allow us to learn, grow, live, work, and lead together. So, with that, feel free to pull out what is in that nice little bag of yours. And then I will continue about forward. So, first item you will immediately notice is a coffee cup. You will see on that cup, one side recognizes CSD 13J and our work, while the other side is a collage of the words of the strategic visions of the strategic goals, student growth and achievement, family involvement, community partnership, and staff leadership and continuous improvement. The coffee cup also symbolizes reflection as who has not sat with a cup of coffee or tea in the morning or evening, reflecting on what your day brings ahead for you and the positive things you have accomplished within that day. So, within that coffee cup, there are a few items that I know you will be able to use. However, with a little bit of spin from my perspective of the superintendent and Board of Directors' relationships and how we have and will continue to go about the work we do together. So, in the cup, you will find two AA batteries. These batteries represent the energy that each of you bring for me each day. The ability for me to reach out to talk to you, listen to you, and bounce our thoughts and ideas from each other at different times in my year and a half at Central truly keeps me energized and grounded. In addition, when you are talking about batteries, that plus and minus direction of placement is important to make the charge run. Thank you for listening and being the energy I need as we do this work together. Next, you will find 200 grand, at least in a candy form.
Does this violate policy with the state of $50?
No, it does not. This reflects my appreciation for your work as Board members and being the stewards of our budget. Each year, the budget process is truly a statement of values of the Board of Education as elected representatives of the community. You help with many others to make the choices about how we allocate resources to best provide a full and enriching public education for our students. As you hear me say, whole children, whole educators leads to a whole community. Thank you for working with me to meet the needs of our students and staff and our work together of being fiscally responsible. You also see three pens, and I might add, in a majority of our school colors. These pens represent our focus on development of sound policy to support students, staff, families, and community. A special appreciation to Director Klein and Director Mann for their work and dedication this year to updating our central policies. I also appreciate the Board's willingness to be innovative and forward-thinking in supporting our school communities, being one of the first districts to adopt the trauma-informed policy this past December. Thank you for your dedication to this work, which guides the day-to-day functions within the district and schools. Next, you will find lifesavers. These represent our beginning steps of prioritizing and advancing equity within the school district. We have such amazing and diverse communities and schools that your investment in this work will allow each and every learner to receive the necessary resources they need individually to thrive in Central School District regardless of their national origin, race, gender, sexual orientation, disability, home language, or family outcome. We collectively are in the beginning stages of building a comprehensive strategic plan and initiating conversations about equity by sharing data with stakeholders, proactively seeking partnership, and listening to one another so we can build a collective effort to improve access, opportunity, and learning outcomes for all students. Thank you for working with me as we continue to advance equity within Central School District. You are helping to build the life of whole children, whole educators, and the whole community. And then lastly, there are two items in your cup, glue and rubber bands. By definition, glue is used for sticking objects or materials together. Rubber bands are a loop of stretchy material for holding things together. We have begun to build a solid foundation together for Central School District 13J. This involves being cohesive as glue can do. However, we must also be flexible as we make decisions, decisions such as the rubber bands have the capability of doing. The rubber band also symbolizes our growth together as this object can expand, stretch, grow, and support, which is a necessity in this work together. Thank you for your teamwork and support as we continue forward. Finally, you will see on the outside of the coffee cup several symbols of graduation caps and diplomas, as the ultimate goal of this work in the education of the whole child is to have them graduated and prepared and ready for career and/or college. This involves great teaching and learning, engaging the different cultures of our learners and families, commitment to our partners as we cannot do this work alone, and understanding that every one of our students have the ability to learn, grow, live, work, and lead so they are prepared for their individual futures. Thank you for your commitment each and every day and for your relentless work as we continue this work together in this gem of a school district. So, I truly appreciate each and every one of you as we do this work together over the next few years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cease.
Is this red and blue, is that Republican or Democrat?
No, that is Central, Independent, Elementary, Talmage, Dolphins of MES, and Ash Creek is Navy Blue as well. So, a mix of the school colors.
Did we have a Republican?
Nope.
Nope, she brought it, that she pulled it. Cease, we're down to you, I think.
I know, that was quick, right? So, today, if you checked your online packet, and if you didn't, I think we have some over there. It included your detailed financial report, which is that as of the end of the quarter, as of December 31st, which is 50% of the way through the year, we are closely tracking our expenses. We are well within that range for many of them, as you will see, particularly supplies and materials. That is tracking well under the 50%. Some of that's because of large expenditures that are planned later in the year, but we are being very prudent with those expenses in order to be able to meet our requirements for the year. And I did point out, the sinking fund that we usually make at this time comes out of a line item on the general fund called Other Transfers. It's then transferred to our QSCAB, the Qualified School Construction Bond Account, to make that sinking fund payment. We have not done that yet this year. That deposit, I guess, that we're putting into our sort of savings account to make a balloon payment is optional. We get to select how much we do, we just need to save up, and we've been doing so at a steady rate rather than try to plan for a large balloon payment in 2025. So, that amount is a little bit optional, kind of waiting to make sure we're on track because of the salary increases that we had. And also, we are finding ourselves with needing to hire in a lot of temporary employees, even at this point in the year, to provide direct student support, particularly students with disabilities. We've got some high-needs kiddos and we are bringing in instructional assistants, either sort of on a one-on-one basis or to really help those classrooms that need extra support for kids. And because of that, we're tracking those salary line items more closely than usual and we'll make that sinking fund payment in March because we'll have a good idea and the ability to project out where we are and figure out if we can make the 140,000 I usually budget or if we need to cut that back a bit this year, which means we're kicking the can down the road, we'd have to put more in in future years.
140 gives us to write what we need in 2025?
Yes. I have it sort of amortized out with interest earnings and things and that's about what we're putting in at this point. We were putting in more than that when interest rates were .05%. We are clear up to 3% on our 4% on our LGIP funds right now, so we're balancing that out and trying to plan those payments ahead.
So, let's say we get closer to the end of the year and it looks like, based on the budgets that we have in place right now, we could only put 120 in or 100 or something like that. Do we have the ability to move it from anywhere else with a, whatever you call those things?
With a resolution, budget resolution. We can, if we've appropriated someplace else. For example, we can make that payment out of our capital funds. So, if we have enough appropriated in the capital funds and haven't spent it all on the portables and the portable that we didn't plan on replacing this year and things, then we could move some out of another fund. But I think we'll be able to make this general fund payment fine, I just am delaying that a little bit, so, just for your information.
Voice a concern and say we shouldn't do that lightheartedly.
No, we, yeah, we need to be very...
Taking money out of the Christmas fund is never any fun at Christmas time.
It never is, and we plan to have that $2 million set aside in 2025 so we don't have to worry about it. Any other questions? Thank you.
So, I'm going to just, as we continue my report, we're going to continue down with several first readings of policies. And again, this is just information only. We continue to update the policies and we are making good progress towards by, I'm going to say July, possibly August, we will be in good standing of all of our policies. So, we are down into the fiscal management because I am going in order as we go through this. And again, both Director Klein and Director Mann have been working with me in this. So, the first one, DH, is under fiscal management and it is bonded employees and officers. This is just a minor change to the policy with language addressing who may or who will have individual fidelity bond coverage as required by compliance with the Oregon State statute. So, again, just a clarity on that piece. DID, again, still in the fiscal management section, deals with property inventories. This is also minor changes to the policy with language addressing the value of district supplies to be included as district inventory. And so, we had a long discussion about this. You'll see that the guidance that we have there is for $300 or greater with the property inventories for supplies. DN, again, fiscal management is disposal of district property. These are also minor changes to the policy with language addressing who can dispose of district properties. And it is identifying specifically the business manager and in this case, within our organization, that would be Cease. Well, it gives me some discretion as a superintendent, but again, giving reference to Cease in her job duties. There's also additional language and guidance about any district property that was purchased with either state, federal, or private grant funds in the process that we need to follow for those pieces of property. The next, you're going to see it's both in EDC, which is Support Services, and you'll see slash KGF, and then the opposite, KGF-EDC, which K's are the community relations, E's are the support services. And this is specifically the policy authorizing use of district equipment and materials. And this language clarifies that district materials and equipment will be used only for school purposes by district personnel on district properties. And it clarifies that equipment shall not be used for private financial gains, as well as clarifies if there is excessive damage, that a fee will be determined accordingly based on potentially repairs or what that replacement cost might be. So, that's really just making both, anyone that is involved in student services or community relations, that we make them aware of that.
Is that what that asterisk means in the name, just that it shows up somewhere?
On both policies, correct. Or both sections of the, I call it the policy workbook. The next one, EAB, is again Support Services, and this is school bus scheduling and routing. And again, some of this is what we are doing in practice, but it is getting the policy up to date. This is additional language specific to determining of safe roads for school bus travel will be made by transportation supervisor. And I think, I want to be clear, that's very important. Cease and I, the last night, that is part of our conversation and working with, we have an interim transportation manager right now who really has stepped in and has done in a short two days, really jumped on board and early this morning was out with a couple of our staff communicating with Cease and I in regards to if we needed to start school late. So, again, this policy makes it clear that, to some degree, it's their decision and then I get to be the fun one that gets to publicly acknowledge that. So, again, we're already doing that in practice, but it does clarify that. It also talks about school bus routing and the planning and organizing of routes to ensure that student safety is of the utmost and that we also are receiving maximum bus use efficiency. So, there's some processes that we're working through right now tied to this policy of making sure that we are being efficient and safe with all of our school bus routes, et cetera. The next one is GBDA, and it falls under Personnel, and it is the Mother Friendly Workplace Policy. This, again, is minor language changes, clarifying access to a room for mothers to express milk for their child and/or breastfeed their child and the reasonable efforts that we will make to support that. So, again, there's just some clarity of language in that policy. The next one, and again, you're going to see with the asterisk because it falls in two different areas, GBN, which again is Personnel, slash JBA, and then JBA is our Student Section. And this is the policy specific to sexual harassment. There is some major language changes addressing the policy, including that it calls out now both students, staff members, or third parties, and it gives that definition of third party that wasn't in there in the past. The language is specific to the Oregon Revised Statute that the district must provide written notice to the complainant and that those who have initiated the complaint shall be notified when the investigation has been concluded and if there has been any violation of the policy was found to have occurred in that process. So, that's one of the major shifts in the policy. It also clarifies that the district may report individuals in violation of staff registered with Teachers and Standards Practice Commission. So, again, that's just that reminder that there are times that licensed staff, whether it be administration and/or licensed, administration or licensed staff that could potentially be turned into TSPC. And then finally, the complaint procedure is posted on the website, which we have been in compliance with for at least the two years that I have been here, and so we have that complaint procedure in place on the bottom of our website pages. So, that is it for this month on the just first review of policies. We're making it through.
Procedure question. So, we have the bus scheduling and routing separated. One of them is on the list for approval tonight and the other one is on our first reading list. Is that okay?
Yes, they are two, correct. They're two different policies. Let me go to the one...
The only difference I could see was one of them had fewer things highlighted, which I wasn't sure what that meant. But they looked identical.
This is, oops, wrong one. I apologize, let me get to it.
So, it's EAB, G1 versus one...
That is what we are doing first reading on today. No, 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 I'm sorry.
So, it's in both places?
Yes, that should have been just in first reading.
Okay, so that, so we'll take that out of...
That is correct. And then it will go as second reading next month.
Does anyone have a question on the Mother Friendly Workplace?
Yes. Yeah, Brian and I, and that's potentially, one of the questions that was brought up was about surrogate donors. And so, I'm getting clarity from Brian if we can add language. If that is the case, then we would add that into the second reading to move forward with that and then go through the full three readings in regards to that. Thank you.
Another procedural one. This is the summary, I printed it out, it's the abstract. It has the special interest materials one listed as adopted on 2/4, but I think we...
First, we pulled, I pulled that. We have been meeting with the CEA leadership and so we've had a couple discussions about several policies. So, we're going to continue to work with them both on the policy and the administrative regulation, so the day-to-day and how that would look. We met about three weeks ago and had that conversation and then just had that discussion that I, they would like both the policy and the AR, that we'll work together before it comes back to you. So, we did pull it from the second reading for this.
Get it cleaned up on this list?
Yes.
It doesn't look like we approved it.
Yep. It's on the spreadsheet that we give them.
Yeah, just...
Yep.
In the meeting minutes and then update that as a part of our consent agenda next month so that it looks...
Yep, we will do that.
So, it looks like we know what we're doing.
Yeah.
Other than that, you guys are doing a great job going through these and making progress.
Back to you.
Anything else on your superintendent report?
Nope, not for that one.
Nothing?
That's it.
So, Board Report, upcoming activities of the next Board meeting will be March 4th, and we have a PLC meeting on March 18th at 6:00. And we're postponing the administrative report, correct?
No, that we are doing. Because he lives in town.
Oh, never mind.
Jason Clark.
So, we're down to Administrative Reports, Division 22 Review.
So, was there a PLC meeting last week?
What, no?
Was there a PLC meeting last week? I was out of town.
Yes.
Could I get a brief update on what was covered in the PLC meeting last week?
Yes, we, so, last week at the PLC, we actually went through the presentation that I will be working with for community meetings. And so, we went through with the Board, just that whole entire presentation, got some feedback, also took them through an activity because we do know potentially that in, as legislative begins, sessions have begun, there potentially could be additional funding through a school improvement plan. And so, there are four areas, and again, we're going to also share this with the community because we do want their input to potentially say, if this funding were to come available, where would we want to put those resources? So, really, the entire PLC was specific to the strategic planning and the next steps and timelines I'm looking at, Adriana and I are working through. So far, we have, I believe, 10 of the 15 meetings that we have scheduled, almost all scheduled, combinations of either being at the schools in the morning right after school starts, some at the schools in the evenings. We are working on a press release to go out. We're having to make some adjustments because of weather, I'm concerned of weather this week. So, now, we were going to start some meetings this week, but we do need to probably make some adjustments if we do have the weather that looks like it's going to continue throughout all of this week and those decisions. So, we are also working on a couple different meetings in this building and then also reaching out to, I will be reaching out through both city councils to go share and set up a time to be able to meet with both government group, then a separate business group. I have reached out and am in the process of working with, opportunity to meet with this faith-based organizations. We are working on getting a meeting also at Colonial Amisad, and then we do have a couple of meetings set for our parent advisory committees that do meet in that. We also then are going to be working with the principals to find a time after school to then do the same presentation to staff and they have the option to be able to come in, because that's very important to me, the staff voice. I actually have already done two sessions with students. I have a lot of good information from students and am talking through with a few people on the best way to present that because they're honest and I think it's very important that everyone sees and hears from the, what I would say are our clients, you know, the students and the staff are our clients. And so, really gathering that information as well, so the kids or the students have, we have some amazing, you already know this, but we have some amazing students within this school district and I've had some really good conversations with them over the last few weeks. So, that was pretty much. Did I miss anything from, anything else from the PLC meeting that was a majority of what we did? Yeah, I will, I can get you, yes, a copy of it. It's, I would say it's still in draft form, I'm making my adjustments to it, but I can get you a copy of that, Steve, for sure.
Did you guys talk about, so as you're scheduling these meetings, what's your process of keeping the Board apprised of which meetings are when?
So, that's going to, we are in the process of building a press release that will go to all of you and then I will work with you because I would love for those of you that can be at the meetings to be able to be there, to listen as we go through the process of gathering information from our community. So, that will all be... all be as we work through the press release and then getting you guys information through the Friday reports as well.
Friday, yeah, I think that would make sense. Put upcoming meetings into the Friday report.
Yep.
So we see.
We were going to last week and then I, like I said, the weather is causing me some havoc right now. Just going to talk a little bit. Every year, we are required through the Oregon Department of Education to work through a process called Division 22 and it really, and I'm going to turn it over to Jason Clark, who has done an excellent job last year, we, since I have been here, started with Dory. Dory began to put a spreadsheet together, but as I've shared with you, part of the reason I've put Jason in his role is he is allowing us to be organized and, and keep information and processes. So we, if and when we were to ever be audited, we have places where now literally they can sit with Jason and Jason can show them evidence of what we are doing with, within our, within our schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. We just have a few slides to share with you and then we can answer any questions after that.
Thank you, Dr. Cavista. Board Chairman Mosier, Central School District School Board, thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening our Division 22 report. Thank you for those kind words, Jen. But I do have to give a lot of credit to our building principals and office staff. That's really where a lot of the information came from. I was the collector of information as it came in and they were amazing, the way that they provided me with the information that we needed to make sure that we had that evidence for compliance. As Jen said, first of each year, school districts are to report their locals, to their local school boards, a district standing with respect to all Division 22 standards for public elementary and secondary schools, set forth an administrative rule 581-022-2305. So this is a yearly process that we go through. Next slide, please. We had set up three objectives to get us there. First, to collect the evidence to show compliance for each of the 53 O A Rs under Division 22. Secondly, we collected the evidence in a way that was organized, allowing us to really use an evaluation process, which allows us to identify our strengths in the district and areas of improvement that we can continue to work on. And then lastly, after we contained all of our information and evidence, the district administrative team evaluates the evidence of each O A R and determines the district's compliance with Division 22. So that's what we have done as a administrative team. Take a look at the next slide, please. This is one example of a way that we collect evidence. These are the first six O A Rs in Division 22 and you can see our compliance status. We met in all of those areas. To the right, you can see where we've noted our evidence. Some of those areas for evidence are, again, board policy, protocols, calendars, curriculum maps, whatever the evidence may be. There are two ways that we've collected that, the evidence. One is electronically, anything that we could collect for each one of the O A Rs in electronic folder. Some things we just weren't able to get electronically and we use the old-school format here. And we have our O A Rs and we have hard copies of evidence as well. So really, two areas that we can go to, to take a look at evidence and assurance that we are doing these things under Division 22. Next. Here's an example of one area of the 53 standards. It's a non-compliance status and Dr. Cavista, you're going to talk a little bit about our, our status here with this one.
Yeah, I sent, because of the weather, I sent Dr. Vickery Holmes. Otherwise, she would be here to, to show this. We were out of compliance in this area last year. This is specific to the K five curriculum adoption for health standards. And so this year, Dr. Vickery has been working with a committee of teachers, both at the middle school and at the elementaries, as well as parents within the community to start to build and design from the standards of the plans that we will, the specific standards we will focus on K through, through five. And so they are working through that. We will, they're, they're getting close to having the, the final pieces put together. We are planning in, I believe it's March, that we will go through that with the elementary schools. And again, we've had teacher voice in this because it is a big part in, in a small change that we will, we will do at the elementaries. And so we will start that process. So we actually will be in compliance as of 2019, 20. We are, again, there are several school districts across the, as I've gathered information about, are we the only ones in this situation? We are not. There are other school districts that are in similar situations because again, it is a little bit of standards specific to health and understanding your body and different things. So we're trying to be very intentional in how we do that work and what that looks like from a, from a K five perspective. So we'll, we'll be giving you guys as, as we get closer to the, the spring, probably a, a report with the committee so you guys can have an understanding of what that's going to look like as we move forward.
We have adopted the K five curriculum. Is that right or not?
We have not. Well, let me rephrase that. We have, we are looking at, with what we adopted for the six eight, there is an extension of that K five. So that potentially will be part of that conversation. So we do have already some of the curriculum that we potentially could use in K five. That is correct.
What we approved last year was six eight?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, six 12, I believe.
Maybe it was, okay.
So that, again, this is the one area we are still out of, out of compliance in.
So our next steps, we compiled our evidence. We have taken a look at our compliance. Now, we are sharing our compliance status with our school board, our local school board. This week, we'll post the Division 22 outcomes to our district website to show public. And then lastly, we will submit our annual form to O D E via Indistar as the program we go through, and that will be done before the 15th of February. And at that point, we'll meet all the requirements that were asked of us through Division 22.
And then you'll see later on in the, in the business agenda that we actually will want approval of the, moving forward with the, with the approval of Division 22. So we'll, that'll be in the business section.
Our compliance then was the human sexuality curriculum?
Correct.
Are there any questions that I or one of the others?
What the little notebook is?
This is. Yes, the little notebook. It is, Steve. And it's one of those, it's a living document at this point. We know the 53 standards, you know, we've already done that as things have came, hey, this goes with the 23 and we're just collecting that and just building our case for what we do or what we need to do.
And there's things that we've looked at that is, even as we have the evidence, we have evidence, but we also have noted that there are areas that we see that we could make some improvements. And so we'll continue to work through those areas. But again, we are in compliance for majority of the, of the Division 22 with, with that one area still, that we will be in compliance as of, of 2019.
One question that came to my mind is, do you go back and look at what was non-compliant last year and try to close those out so that as a part of what we file and as a part of what we post, there's actually, it kind of starts with last year's?
That's right. That's a great question, Steve. Yes, that's, that's exactly what happens. There's a little area for some verbiage on why we didn't meet. That's where we start and that's what we work on the previous years. So one of those areas that we went from non to meeting was in the area of our staff being CPR, first aid certified. And there is a, one staff for every 60 students in each building. So we had to come up with a way that we can monitor that, have those annual trainings to keep enough staff certified so we can reach that status. And at this point, we have a nice process we've set up with each building, transportation, food service, and we're monitoring those certifications. So that would be an example.
My understanding correct that O D E doesn't actually review this and say, you know, out of what, are you guys messed up? It's, we essentially just have to post it and tell the public that we're almost perfect, but not quite. And that's it, right?
That's correct.
Yep. And again, part of, as we have, I know that things can change. And so I also know and, and just as I continue to be here and, and involved with legislature, the legislature and potentially things that will be in the future, I want to put us in a place that if at any point, anyone comes in to audit what we are doing, that we will have the evidence and so it's not a scramble for us to show what we are doing. Again, as I said, I'm, I want to be clear, we are in compliance, but we have identified a couple of areas that we want to continue to, to look at and make sure that we are putting the best product out to support both students and our staff through this process. And, and again, I'm going to say, first off, kudos to Jason. He has done a really good job of following up and communicating with staff because some of the information is not specifically here in the district offices. It is examples, whether it be in an I E P or whether it be at a school in their handbook or a lot of, a lot of items, obviously because of the high school and graduation and, and requirements there. So we just, our staff has been amazing, really in the last month and a half that we have been working towards this and having conversations in our administrative meetings of when we either believe we are in compliance or not and being able to talk through and who has potentially evidence that maybe we, we weren't thinking about that, that allows us to be in compliance. So our staff has done an amazing job with this process.
In theory, it should go faster than it should, right?
In theory, it should.
That's the goal.
Well, and the O D E adds things. So a couple of years ago, we had the lead and water problem in Portland Public Schools. That not only led to us requiring to have a lead and water plan, but an entire healthy and safe schools plan, which we had to develop from scratch, which we had to implement, which is now on Division 22. So they added an entire section related to a new requirement. They can just keep doing that anytime they want to to us.
And what was different than last year is so, as, as Dr. Vickery and I worked through it last year, they really pulled out three areas that they wanted us to show a lot of evidence. This year, it is all 50.
Three.
Three of them. So again, we are putting ourselves in a good, good, good place that we have in the, both the policies and the documents to show that we are moving the district and again, in the right direction, knowing that there are still going to always be areas that we will continue to, to get better at and, and improve with.
Who looks at these from, since you're the legislature's representative? Does anybody look at these and say, are these still the right 53 standards for Oregon State schools?
Oh, darn.
Somebody's got to ask these questions.
It's literally the, the O A Rs that govern us.
Correct.
So any rule that they implement that schools have to follow, they measure us on.
Right.
So it's not really outcomes as much as are we following the laws that relate to schools.
I understand. I was just suggesting we might want to check and see if the laws still apply.
Yeah.
That is a valid question.
Not our job, but somebody should be.
No. I, I think that is a valid question and even as Jason and I went through a handful of things. So for example, one of them is definitions and, I mean, anywhere that you look, whether it be in policies or on our websites, or if you're looking in a curriculum guide, I mean, that's to some degree, it is such a broad understanding of what that actually means. And so again, we're, because our, we're moving towards having policies up to date and, you know, that evidence, we, like we, and then with our administrative team are making those decisions. Again, I'm going to put us in the best spot. So should we ever get or have an audit that, then they can nitpick us from there. But I don't disagree with you. There are, there are a few things I continue to look at as I get to go through my first year of this true legislative session. Not that we didn't have one last year, but this is a little bit different than last year, that's for sure.
I guess I'll state the same thing I think I said last year when we did the Division 22. As long as we're not wasting a whole bunch of time doing stuff that doesn't matter to kids, great. But otherwise, we should minimize that effort and check the box as quickly and as easily as possible.
Yes, I appreciate that. All right, thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Do my contempt for O D E.
Drive safely home and call and let us know if it's treacherous since I have to go the same way.
So we are down to approval of the consent agenda, which means the approval of minutes, personal recommendations, and the second reading on the policies that were listed.
And I want to make just a note in the minutes that under 6.3 policy updates, second reading, that we are pulling E E A B. Again, just making a reference in the minutes for that. Thank you.
Okay. So it had a first reading though, but it's probably going to come back if revised then, right?
We just had.
We just had the first reading today. So it will come back next month.
We have a second first reading today.
We will have a second first reading.
I was, okay, we've done so many, thinking the one that she wanted to talk about.
That's not even.
That one was pulled. We pulled that this, this, I pulled that. Adrian and I talked, again, partly just because of the conversations that we're having with C A leadership.
It already went through a first reading.
Correct. And remember, at any point, I have the ability to pull, yes.
It'll come back.
Yes.
Okay.
And you just pulled it today, right?
I did pull it today. And partly just because Adrian and I were going through some things and I saw that it was still on there. I just had, not had a chance to get to her to be able to pull it.
Okay.
Given all that, I move, accept the consent agenda.
We got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jared. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. So that puts us now to a business agenda and that could seize back up again.
We have a couple of items tonight for your consideration and which do require actual board resolutions. The first one, we had discussed, oh, well, actually, you've got your Q E M. No, we've got my correction action plan first. Okay. So last month, we mentioned to you that we had completed our financial audit and that those copies were delivered to you. Included in that were some findings by our auditors of a couple of things that they felt needed correction. Some of those were new items. Really, we have one ongoing item that had been addressed in the past. And so those two items were presented to you for corrective action. The comments by the auditors, then our response, including who is responsible within the district and our outcome and anticipated completion. Those were attached in your packet. Actually, they were in the audit report as well. So, but this, this particular thing, now by law, we are required to get a resolution from you saying that you understand and concur with these proposed corrections. So I will take any comments or questions on those, the two items. One is to the Secretary of State, which is a regarding state budget law, talking about sort of the timing of our projections for beginning fund balances and then what those actually turn out to be. And we are changing some processes which will actually help that in the future and get those to be closer. So we will continue to monitor that. That is, I am the responsible party and we will be working towards that in our June budgeting process this year. Yes.
I understand the debt service one, the, the special revenue one. Basically, we've got student activity fund kind of hanging out here all by itself and they spend money and take in money and spend money and take in money. And then sometime during the year, we require them to bring whatever's in the bag and we put it in the bank and oops, it was 200 and some, roughly $200,000 more than we thought. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, we didn't make those entries on our books until year end in the past because we had a separate student body accounting system that kept track of all those ins and outs. If they had a lot of great fundraisers, if they paid some bills at the end of the school year that didn't clear until the following July, things like that. We have taken all that in-house now, right? So we have brought all the accounting for our student body funds at all buildings onto our books. Those expenditures and receipts are recorded on a monthly basis now.
Although they were recorded before. So we could have gone and looked at their accounting system. I mean. I mean, they'd more work, and we'd have to remember to do it, all that kind of stuff. But the data was there, we didn't look at it.
Exactly. It just didn't, we just didn't pull it into our G L. It would have been a manual process at that point, making journal entries, and so now we have it integrated in our receipts and payment systems.
And from my perspective, that is, again, as I was coming in, my first year last year was specifically just the secondary, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cease. And then the elementarys did come on.
This current fiscal year.
So again, this is when you're talking about, especially on the student revenue side of just collections and things, it is a good step in moving and having checks and balances, and that the accounting runs through the district to make sure that we are in compliance.
Has a lot of side benefit.
This much money.
Correct.
If we were talking about, you know, the $5 and $10 change bucket from the store, that's one thing.
Right.
If there's $200,000 lying around somewhere that we don't know about, we should get a better handle on it.
We only know about once a year, we'll put it that way. So, yeah. Nope, we are definitely, yeah, the high school runs quite a bit of money through those student activities, student body funds, so pretty considerable.
And the debt service one is just a matter of how accurately we can project interest rates and-
Right, right.
Tax rates and all kinds of stuff that-
Exactly. Tax collections and all those things, usually a little closer than this. So this particular year, it, I think actually what they expressed to me is the concern there was not necessarily even the dollar amount, as much as the fact that it appeared that we actually collected more and perhaps we didn't appropriate correctly, which we did. So all this is going to do is change our carry forward. And our carry forward by law on debt service, if we over-collect in one year, we have to actually, there's only a percentage we can carry over each year, we have to actually lower the levy rate by that amount that we over-collected in the prior year. So it's always a little bit of adjustment going on there. And the second item is in regards to, again, from the prior year, lack of segregation of duties and payroll processing. This was, this is due to the way our software works. The auditors would like to see a point in the processing in which somebody takes control, does some kind of review or release of payroll data before it can be completed, so that not one person can run a check all the way through from entering the time to getting a check produced. Obviously, that's a control risk. We agree to that. But as described in here, worked with not only, you know, our internal process, but with the E S D, who is our technical support and hosts our software. They even called the software manufacturer. And so all districts that use this software have this same problem. One person can't do that whole process. So in consultation with the auditors, I've at least created another step where I stop and review what is happening to make sure that a payroll run that I don't know about. I already review every payroll once it's run, but now I stop and check and say, were any payrolls run I didn't see? So that's what we came up with, and-
What is the process from payroll being run to check being signed? Who actually sign, I mean, I don't know, you don't sign each check?
Right. So actually, right now, the signature that appears on the checks is that of Jason Clark's. And so he has another check as well, where he reviews payroll journals to see for reasonableness, whether or not it looks like he can catch anything as well.
And then I also do a review every month. So I get every month from the business department, and I sit and go through, is there anything? There are times that I will see things that I'm not sure what it is, and I will then consult with either Cease or Heidi to get clarity, so I have an understanding of potentially why money went there.
And that's typically a little bit, also on the payable side, rather than just the payroll side. But, yeah, we have several reviews, just not that actual button on the computer.
So the auditors are actually looking for a split in control, like from payroll input to check generation?
Yes.
And in a school district this size?
Seems a little picky.
We should have that in our software. They found a similar, they had a similar concern about three years ago, four years ago, on the accounts payable side, so paying our bills, our vendors. And we looked at the sequence of activities that go from entering an invoice to printing the check and running it out the door. On the accounts payable side, there was a task in the sequence that was releasing the invoices that were entered and processing them for payment, then a cash journal, cash requirements journal is run, then a checks are run. That release, we could delete from the person doing the entry and not affect their ability to then go back and finish the task. I do that review now. So that has added an additional step that I take on prior to us even being able to print checks to pay the bills. There's no such one task in the sequence that can be pulled out on payroll.
But you still have to have somebody, there's still a second person involved, no matter how you do it, that has to sign the checks or get the check signed.
Yes. We now, we now, we have multiple levels of review that the auditors said they would, this would not appear in future years because we've addressed it to the best of our ability.
Got it.
So, again, the management response, I'm the responsible person. Action was actually taken in July of 2018 to mitigate this risk. Based on the limitations we identified, we are taking our best shot at it. And if you approve of those recommendations, then you would need to make a motion to adopt the resolution on the Audit Plan of Action 2017-18. Again, that step is a new requirement by state law.
I'll move that we approve a resolution to-
To adopt the corrective action plan?
To adopt the corrective action.
For 2017.
Audit Plan of Action for 2017, 2018, 2017, 2018.
There's a motion to accept the Audit Plan of Action for 2017 and 2018. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Peggy. You already got to do one. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Should pass out.
Motion passed.
Pass little motion cards, and after you play your motion card, you can't do another.
Thank you.
I find it interesting that as we did this, that you called Power School and Sun Guard, and they called other folks, and they says, there's nothing that we can do in the software for it. Nice.
Yeah.
Anyway.
We tried.
That's encouraging. Okay, so the next thing in your packet, you will see-
Actually, there's one before that. We do need to pass a motion to approve the Division 22 findings as presented earlier to report to the Oregon Department of Education for the 2018, 19.
It says Division 22.
Yep.
It just doesn't give us, it doesn't give us a motion.
I'll move that we approve the Division 22 plan and recommendations as presented to the board by Mr. Clark in this evening's board.
Do I hear a second for the?
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Christina. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Now we're down to the, so-
And this actually was Steve-
At the P L C.
Was at the P L C. We did talk about this as well.
Yeah. So there had been a previous one, and then this one came out. There was kind of the consent that we felt that this was an okay one for us to approve and send over to O S B A that were in support of their process that they're going to go through for this year for trying to get school funding and that. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about it. Do you have any questions, Steve, that, okay, so?
And again, I think there's just a couple highlights that I want to, just that really, can we look towards, or that this resolution in working with the Oregon School Board Association that we're looking at, how do we support a true quality education model? You know, again, we've had this Measure Five from 1990, which has had really the focus of the underfunding. Really, how do we continue as a board to believe in the strong funding? How do we support well-rounded approaches, so P E, music, extracurricular activity? How do we continue as a board to make efforts to continue to close achievement gaps? Because again, that is part of this. I think one of the outstanding parts for me in at least the last year is the work that the legislative politically together has done with their Joint Committee on Student Success, when they went around to the entire state and really are listening to not only students but staff, and really trying to, in my mind, as best they can, find a bipartisan approach to really funding K-12 education. And that we, you know, that we're really just here to pledge that we are going to support those efforts as we move forward in this legislative session. So, again, just some of those key highlights in that resolution that I think are important that we talk about, or we have talked about in at least a year and a half that I have been here. Some of it, education, because Measure Five is in education, but have a full understanding of that process now.
Did you guys talk about fixing the revenue side of the equation at your P L C meeting? Because-
That's for a, again, we are moving towards budget time, so there are several different proposals that will be coming. And so, yes, we will at some point be having some pretty lengthy conversations. You will also see for me this Friday in the Friday Report, there are some legislative days that are coming up, specifically Polk County, and I am interested in taking a handful, whether it be representatives from, and again, we are just starting to have a conversation with both C E A and O S E A and where we potentially could align and have conversation together. I think I would like voices from the board to be a part of that as well. And so there's a couple dates coming up that if we can get a group together, I know, and Ms. Wade, I'm going to look at you. I think there is a, on the 18th, correct, is a legislative day also?
It was the 20 something.
There is a lobby day.
Lobby day.
People can go, but there is a, the O E A is coming, their support behind it, March.
March date.
They will be a march for students on a day starting on Capitol steps at 10:00. And then after that, people will be making a statement.
Yeah. So that we're going to have a couple opportunities, whether it be through from both February and March as we go through this process.
And the jury lobby deal coming up in March.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and I did just, had the opportunity this past week to testify with the, there is a bill out to continue that. And so a team of us went to just show our support as we move forward with that, so.
So do I hear a motion in support of the education funding to level recommended by the Q E M resolution that we have before us?
So moved.
Moved by Steve, seconded by Jerry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. And then?
Two left.
I don't have this one.
The next one is the Local Service Plan Resolution. And this is, we have to, through the Willamette Education Service District each year pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, the Board of Central School District needs to approve the following 2019 to 2021 Local Service Plan Resolution. Again, these are areas that we, areas where the Willamette E S D provides services. Some of those areas that we do use are areas such as programs for children with special needs. If there's some additional technology support that we may need, or if there's other support services or school improvement services that we might need, this is approval of the, just the document that shows that's what's going to be on the docket throughout 2019 and 2020 for us to choose should we use those funds.
So do I hear a-
Of what's available, yes. Thank you, Cease.
So this is what's available.
Correct.
People wish to buy their services.
Correct. And we do, we do work every April. Both Cease and myself and Ms. Harmon do go to the Willamette E S D and sit with them to go through what programming that we do need, that they offer a service. So as an example, we have, one of our nurses are through the E S D, correct?
1.5.
1.5 of our nurses through the E S D as an example.
So can I ask a question about E S Ds in general? How, so is, this obviously has an input to the E S D budget. Who monitors that? How does that, by rubber stamping this, do we just say, you know, whatever you want to do and charge for it is fine with us? Or does somebody else, well, I guess there's an E S D board, right?
Correct.
And so they're responsible for overseeing this and saying, yes, that makes sense to do in our role, in our charter as an E S D. This seems like this is sort of, yeah, we could improve this. We only use like 10 of these 200 services or whatever, but we're saying it's okay that you want to spend money on all the rest of these. But there is somebody else watching the kitty, right?
Correct. I think that that is a constant conversation that we are having of what supports the educational services do give to school districts. I know that that is always a topic of conversation, since I have been here and continue to be a part of that and making sure that we are fiscally spending that money. There are a few things in the future that I may push back on as we build other systems within our school districts that they currently provide. We're not there yet, but myself and, again, Cease and Julie do spend a lot of time in the spring going through because, again, we're trying to, at times, is it better for us to run the services specifically through the district financially and then obviously just from a oversight versus the E S D? So, Don, that is, I appreciate the question because I think that is something that we are constantly evaluating of, is it better to do or have in-house versus partnering? Because we do know that partnering is important, but we have made some decisions even last year of bringing what a couple services that we did do in the, through the E S D actually are now in-house with us. So every year, we look at pricing and those decisions, and I will continue because there are a few that we are required by law that I'm not, I think that we will build systems to then potentially have a different conversation of if I have to still do that. But that's probably at least a year out still, if not a little bit longer.
Sure, kind of building on that, so we approved the listed services now. Is there a point in the year where it would make sense to do more of a comprehensive review of the service that we did receive from W E S D and come prepared with kind of a, how did they do on our eyes, kind of a, and almost like have them sit here?
Like a report?
Yeah. It's like a, if they're a supplier to us, what I would do is some type of a supplier on an annual basis, supplier review, and put them a little bit on the hot seat. I brought this up in the past. I mean, how do we even measure the quality of what we're getting for our money? So it's kind of along the same lines as how do you put the right checks and balances and this? So it's more, you know, how could we do something like that, or what, when would we do that?
We have-
We have, what you've adopted is sort of their service, local service plan offering. Then each year as we go buy services, we have a plan of our own that is then very clear as to what they're charging us, you know, how much of that we're using, utilizing. Some of it, we, again, buy the services directly from them. Some of it, we transit through to our budget. Some of it, we contract for because we didn't know at the time and the plan. Then we have to go in and contract for additional services later. And we can easily present that report, sort of talk about those things. I am fairly certain that Dr. Novotny would be glad to come over from the ESD and also present to you and talk to you about what the ESD does. We used to have those interactions once in a while and it's been a while. So, I imagine that we could actually have him discuss some of those things, too.
Be good. If they, you know, leverage them, they come and present to us.
Yep.
And give us the ear in review and, you know, any key messages they think we should be contemplating.
So, we can, I'm sorry, you finished? We can go to an outside contract. So, I'll pick something here. Courier services. If we decided that we didn't want to use ESD, we don't necessarily have to do it ourselves. We could hire UPS to do it or somebody.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The interest, the interesting process in this is, we could tell them that we want to do all our own services. They still keep 10?
10%.
10%?
What they say here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which is an interesting conversation.
Homeschool registration, attendance supervisor, crisis response team, and use suicide prevention services.
And produce that document right there.
Right. Overhead and add.
Okay.
Okay. Now, am I just staying for WESD shows up, too?
No. And I think, I think it would be good. I mean, I think they could come share even a three-year trend of what we have used and the services that we have. And then I appreciate that, what key messages would they share with us from that perspective? So, I will reach out to him and work with him.
So?
To come have that as we adopt potentially in April.
We're looking for a motion to approve the 2019 to 21. So, this is actually through the biennium, right?
The services, correct. So, this is the planned services over the next biennium that they would offer.
Okay. So, can we, before I ask this, so if we make a decision midway, let's say the middle of December, can we change?
So, we, it is a year-to-year that we meet with them. So, every year we will go and meet with them. And there is some windows of opportunity, is the way I'm going to phrase it, to potentially make a change or add. Although, again, as we get into the year, it can be a little bit more difficult if we need to add because again, they're also building off of budget and FTE based off of what the school districts in the Willamette area are requesting. So.
We're not requesting anything here. We're just passing a resolution that says,
Correct. No, we are just, we are required.
This menu is okay with us.
Correct.
We'll come back during the budget and process and say, yeah, we want one of these and one of those and one of these and a half of that and a quarter of this, kind of stuff.
Yes.
So, what we're looking for is a motion for the approval of the 2019-21 Local Service Plan Revolution. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jerry, a move. Do I hear a second?
Are you?
Gone once, gone twice. Second at my dawn.
Did I turn you off that bad, Don?
All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And now, the one?
And back to me.
That I have questions about.
Okay. So, in a similar fashion, we have a partner to provide our property and casualty insurance services. We are basically self-insured for that purpose, but rather than me try to go out and get underwriting and secondary insurance, we have joined in a trust with almost every other K-12 district in the state to form the property and casualty for educators' insurance trust. And they, we have a trust agreement amongst all of us, an intergovernmental agreement, as it were. There have been some changes that they realized were not reflected in our joint agreement. And so, the PACE board, which is made up of colleagues of mine in various areas of management of our school districts, and that board has adopted a new agreement that is approved by OSBA. PACE actually is sort of a division of OSBA. The OSBA board has approved it. And now, we are requesting a resolution to enter into the joiner of trust agreement with PACE to continue to provide our insurance services for the future.
So, does PACE act as an insurance company effectively? Do they actually pay out of the trust when we?
They do. They do. They, we got another check today for the little portable out here from PACE.
But they do get secondary insurance. So, if it was the whole building that went down?
Absolutely.
They'd go to Lloyd's or whoever and get?
Yeah. I've heard great stories about the Woodburn fire a few years ago. Albany had an arson fire. So, they, they, we cover, we all cover all of those. So, our brethren and sisters are helping take care of this incident out here behind us as well as others. And again, we could go out for an RFP. We could try to have our broker quote us others. But, you know, we generally speak to our insurance broker about this. And they are so specialized in education that we are getting a heck of a good deal and great partnership. And I think Jason Clark will attest to this because our PACE partners have put on safety committee training for us this year. They have done inspections. They do suggestions about improvements. Very, very active in education and partnership in regards to property and casualty and liability incidents.
I want to add to that. Cece and I were at a COSA conference last week and some hot topics were brought up of some of the things that we have worked through on a safety security side this year. And you all know me, I'm pretty transparent in how I feel about things. And so, we'll advocate for our schools. And then, one of them reached out to Cece to have a little bit more intentional conversation because again, I think they are, and I appreciate what Cece just said, they are very clear on how and what they are supporting to make sure from an insurance side that we are getting what we need to support students. And I am very, very thankful for that in just even the conversations that I've had over the last year and a half as we have had to work with them a couple times on a couple different things. They have been beneficial and have given me a lot of guidance in my short time here and a couple things that we've had to work with them through.
So, Steve, what kind of motion are we looking for?
Well, I think we just need to say that we move to accept the PACE trust agreement. How's that sound?
Right. A resolution to accept the PACE, the revised PACE trust agreement.
Go ahead, Don.
I was waiting for one of the ladies over there to say so moved.
Say so moved.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Christina and seconded by Don to accept the PACE agreement. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. So, if you haven't, if you haven't gone to the OSBA conference and gone to the PACE presentation at some point, you should do that sometime. So, the first, the first one that I went to, you walked in the room and there was a dry erase board. They had $5 amounts written on it and they were all five-figure amounts, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the question, when the, when the session started, he goes, do you have any idea, these are the last five payouts for an accident that occurred on school properties? And any ideas? And all kinds of things came up. And the person says, nope, you're all wrong. This is what we paid out for five people that were bitten by dogs on school property and there was no sign posting that dogs must be on a leash. And that lady right there will tell you that I came home and I go, oh, my God. Are we posted? Anyway, with that, we are down by comments by individual board members.
I've already spoken too much, but given that we're talking about insurance and that we talked about bonding, I thought it was appropriate to ask, are we covered? Is there an insurance policy for the board?
Directors and officers liability?
Yes. Okay.
That is part of our liability coverage.
Thanks.
You are covered by your decision, Mike.
I'd hate to spend the rest of my life in jail.
Is that my question, Steve, about our mandatory reporters? Did you find out of mandatory reporters?
I have, I've been on the phone with Brian. I did not, that was one of the questions I did not get with him today. We were talking through a handful of items and I am following up with that to just confirm. I believe, and again, you are, but I want to make, I want to confirm that with him.
Probably through the school, the online, the training.
Yeah. And that's what I just want to make sure. I want to make sure from that perspective.
I thought mandatory reporting was a state law. So, you're protected by that. I think you're talking about protection.
We just wanted to make sure. No, we're checking from, the question was asked, do, as board members, are you, because you are affiliated with the school district, are you required mandatory reporters? And it is on my question, but Brian and I were working through a handful of things that, and then I had to go. So, I will, we are talking probably tomorrow and the next day. So, I will follow up with him. It's on my note.
It actually is specific to workers in certain professions. So, I don't think elected officials would.
Fall into that category. But I will confirm with him.
It's a virtue of starting a youth organization, a mandatory reporter. No comments.
Comments over there?
I got one.
Okay.
We passed a resolution that we want education fully funded, et cetera. I came from a state where the property tax became confiscatory, which was why they passed Proposition 13, which has been a pain in the head down there to them ever since. Proposition 5 here was passed for the same reason, for quantum jumps in property tax. My little cheese box over here, I pay four grand a month, a year. And I know this is anathema to Oregonians, but if they were to have a sales tax, a lot of people who don't pay anything now would pay a little bit. Tourists coming through, high rollers would pay quite a bit if they bought a $60,000 boat or something, they'd pay a little bit. People who don't have much, don't spend much, wouldn't pay much. It would kind of level out the revenue thing. Because we moved up here in '78, my impression then was the way Oregon funded its schools even before 1990 was a joke. And, but if they're going to say, okay, we're going to fund it fully and so, your property tax is going to go up 40%, there's going to be a whole lot of kickback on that. And, I mean, I'm just, as a grumpy old man, I'd have to pay more if I paid, if they had a sales tax, but I think would level the field a little bit where, where a lot of people now aren't paying anything. And they would pay a little bit and that would kind of balance some of this out.
I think that there are going, no, and I appreciate that, Jerry. I think there are going to be, there are, I have seen, I think now, and again, I, as I get more information, we will, I think it is important for us as a, as a board and obviously myself as a superintendent as we get into this, that we do have some public discussion about potentially what is going to be coming forward. I think, as I said, there are going to be times for us to be able to advocate together. And I mean, together with our students, our staff, myself, some of you to move in that direction. There are a couple different potential ideas that I've been, I know that will be, that are being looked at. I don't want to go into too much detail because I think as that information gets out, I want to have that, the most up-to-date information as we talk about what does revenue reform actually potentially look like. Because there are a couple different avenues that they are looking at from what was, has been shared with me. I know Cece also gets it from her, from her perspective with her associations. And so, I think that it is going to be a healthy conversation throughout this, this spring and what that's going to look like. And I do think we do need to have a pretty lengthy discussion as we get to it. There's a lot of legislative representatives who are saying that it is going to take all of us and then each of us finding 25 other people potentially to have these types of conversations to be able to move in whatever that direction may be on what reform, reform looks like. And lots of conversations, there's a superintendent group that is working specifically with the business group. They have been meeting consistently probably for the last four to six months and really having conversations together of, you know, what does this mean, you know, having a well-rounded K-12 student coming out both, again, career-ready and what does that mean? And, and college-ready as we, as we have this conversation. You want to add anything else or from that perspective?
No, I think the lobbyists have really prepared us for the fact that this will be a difficult session as far as revenue projections particularly. One thing to note, because you'll start hearing it in the budget meetings, typically, typically the governor's recommended budget comes out in December. Then the co-chairs of the House Ways and Means Committee do their budget. And they basically say, thank you, Governor, but we don't care what you think. We're the ones who get to do this and this is what we think. Typically, that comes out initially sort of in February-ish. The state Oregon Department of Education is required by law to give us a state school fund estimate for the following year on March 1st. This year, because of some new folks in House Ways and Means, because of the way that things are structured, because the governor has sort of offered up two budgets, we are being told not to expect the House Ways and Means co-chairs' budget until April, maybe May. Therefore, our budget for revenue for the state school fund will be based on the governor's recommended budget. That, if that's the only budget out there and available to ODE, that's what they will base our estimates on. They're also telling us that even if a revenue package is passed, even if the school improvement fund is made available, they anticipate that will go to the, be referred to the voters by legislators. And that vote would take place potentially this November. That additional revenue would be not available prior to July of 2020. So, we're, I, we'll start working with the numbers we have, which are not encouraging numbers actually for us. But that, that is probably where we will start this year. And I am, besides these regular updates we get, I am also on the legislative committee for the school business officials. We have a call every Friday and that includes all kinds of legislation that's out there. And we actually prepare fiscal impact statements, sometimes with an hour's notice on different options that are being considered. So, we're asked for input. That has apparently really made a difference in the capital as different sized districts. I mean, Beaverton chimes in and so do I and, you know, so does Glide or something. So, having different districts talk about fiscal impact is really apparently changing some attitudes about especially mandates and things like that. So, we're both pretty involved in this. We get a lot of information this time of year on top of everything else and hope to let you know as much as we can.
And we're being very intentional. We've already actually started the budget process. I met with my leadership team three, three weeks ago in a retreat to just begin to start about, talking about. So, we are in the process of, of working through some documents to really. really have an understanding of where we are, what the, what some three-year trends of, of where we've spent money and maybe where we need to dig a little bit deeper of looking into and, you know, really, really diving into this because we are, our enrollment is down, but also flat. And so again, that can have impact. It can be less if everyone else around us and in the state is down and flat. And so we're hearing that, but that doesn't always mean that that is what it turns into. And so again, as we talked about last year, when Cece presented potentially of the look back and potentially the $640,000 that we might have to give back, right? That is part of the conversation that we are already starting to have and what that, does that really mean and diving into that. Because it is important. We, we, we will be working through this also knowing that it's going to be later in the year, at least is what's being shared with us or advised to us at this point. So we'll keep working through it.
Oh, yay.
Oh, yeah.
I'm learning a lot.
I just have three comments. Just if board members and folks aren't aware, the C Y S folks have found a home. They're, they're living in the Christian church over in Monmouth. And so they, they have a place to hang out, which is good for them. They're still working through the insurance process side on what they lost in there and stuff. And so I will still be talking with them. I want to comment on admin and staff on thinking about our kids' safety today and getting them out and home and if they needed to be concerning the weather. And so keep watching your email because you'll be asked to go to lobby days and, and stuff at the legislature. And there is a lot of stuff on the table. And with that, we are adjourned.